Okay, this time I'd like to call to order the June 2023 meeting at the Culpeper County Planning Commission. I'd say good evening, everybody, and welcome. Glad you're here with us tonight. We hope you're ready for summer. It's coming, I guess, a week from today officially. And also, I would like to say to all the fathers out there, an early Happy Father's Day, because that's coming along even sooner. So with that, we'll go ahead and get down to business. First item is the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? If so, I'd like a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, so agenda's approved. Next thing is approval of the meetings from the last month's meeting. And any changes to the meetings, to the minutes as written? Okay, accept the motion?
So moved.
Okay. And second it?
Second.
Okay, so minutes are approved. Okay, with that, I guess we now move into new business. So we'll go ahead and turn it over to Sam or Neil.
I operate a utility scale solar facility in accordance with Article 17-7, which is Standards and Procedures for Renewable Energy Generation Utility Scale Solar Facilities and Article 3-2-2.18 of the zoning ordinance. The property is located off of Route 3, Germana Highway, in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. The applicant seeks to construct and operate a 26-megawatt project on approximately 355 acres, of which approximately 252 acres will be actual panel and equipment area. It's found on Tax Amount 54, Parcells 22, 23, 25, and 25C. The Planning Commission will consider, review, and make findings as to whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed utility scale solar facility are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended, Section 15.2-2232. The Planning Commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to approval or disapproval of this use permit.
This case was before you all in April of this year. At that time, the applicant did present their application to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had several questions, concerns related to the county's new ordinance, the adopted solar policy, and also the comprehensive plan. And at that time, staff did have a number of questions that were illustrated in the staff report that was written back in end of March. Since that time, the applicant has worked diligently, in staff's opinion, to provide the missing information or to provide additional information that supplements the original application. For all intents and purposes, the area has not changed, the request has not changed, but the applicant has worked to meet the intent of the new ordinance and its guidelines that are established in Article 17. There are several documents that the applicant has worked hard on, for example, a floodplain analysis, a stormwater analysis. They did further work on the geotechnical, as far as site conditions for the soil. They put together a more substantial vegetation management plan, a little bit different landscape plan that added some buffering area there to the east, and then worked with the access management plan as well, and took staff's comments, the Planning Commission's concerns, and other agency comments into consideration. Ms. Chairman, what I'd like to do is I'm not going to go back through the staff report, but I will highlight some of the changes that were made since this case has been before you all in April. One thing that I did want to note, the parcel there in red is the parcel that we're looking at for the proposed solar facility. It's not the entire Sherwood Farm property. The bulk of the property actually continues to the south and to the east of the red area that you see there, all the way up to Route 3, and then further south and to the east of where you see the red area. One thing that I did want to point out that wasn't pointed out last time is that Sherwood Farm is part of the Greenwood Solar Project, which you all remember several years ago now. It's about 60 acres that they have as part of that project. These projects are separate and distinct. This is a separate application. To date, Greenwood has not been built, even though the site plan has been approved, and I have no status on the Greenwood facility at this point. Just wanted to point that out and clarify that early on, and the applicant can, of course, answer any further questions you may have on that. One thing that was mentioned during the staff's report previously was the use or the applicant's intending to use potentially secondary roads in the county to access the, for construction purposes, to access the site. Staff had very severe reservations towards that. The applicant has removed that. The applicant has perfectly fine access on Route 3, which is a primary highway, and they do intend to use that solely. You have Route 3 to 29, there's no need to use any secondary roads in Culpeper County to access construction for this project. The applicant has addressed a repairing buffer need, which they had that in the previous iteration of their application, but they did address that more fully and is represented in their landscape plan as well. The applicant previously had shared a potential for a different height of solar panels. The applicant is now fully in compliance with the ordinance, which states that the maximum height is 14 feet. So that has been changed in the application. As I mentioned, one document that the applicant spent more time on and has supplemented is the vegetation management plan. In May, the applicant submitted a new plan that supplemented that, that reflects a preliminary soils analysis that was sent to Virginia Tech Soil Testing Lab. It did share some fertilizer and limestone recommendations that would be required to really have a successful establishment of ground cover in the future for this project. And the vegetation management plan details the site preparation considerations. It provides a lot more detail than what was established in the original application. The applicant has also provided data sheets for the two potential solar panels as well, which is a requirement of the ordinance. When it comes to the blasting section, or the applicant has addressed that further in their, in their application as well. Under the viewshed analysis, which is another point, and I skipped over that, but one advantage to this size is that there's no need for a substation for this project, as was pointed out previously, or actually any major infrastructure needs, which will help with the viewshed requirement. As I mentioned, the landscaping plan was amended slightly to add a small area buffer on the eastern side of the project that was largely void of trees. Previously, the site was timbered, but they did leave a large buffer around the area that's proposed for the solar facility. The applicant updated their natural resource inventory, which is another requirement of the ordinance. That report's dated May 8th of 2023. The report was completed by DEC or Drambi Environmental Consulting, in staff's opinion. The items that were pointed out, such as wetlands, floodplains, the soils topo, the threatened and endangered species that they looked at or did a desktop analysis for, staff's comfortable that that documentation that they've supplemented meets the intent of that ordinance section. The applicant also provided an update, updated ENS control preliminary assessment, which is also dated May of '23. The document cross-references the vegetation management plan, and it updates the ENS preliminary concept plan that shares acres divided in a potential best management practice locations, which will work in conjunction with the stormwater facilities. The applicant spent considerable amount of time with their engineer that's on, on task for this particular application, and updated the stormwater management plan. This plan shares a project hydrology exhibit now, study that was done previously. It does reflect that the applicant, and it specifically mentions in this new report that impervious areas do include access roads, equipment pads, racking posts, solar posts, and the panels themselves. The updated report does share a preliminary assessment for how the project can satisfy both the quantity and the quality requirements. There may be some more further discussion about that tonight, however. As I mentioned, the applicant also provided an updated geotechnical report. It's also dated May of '23. That desktop, now, they did a testing of 14 additional auger holes throughout the site, and they also conducted six new excavations on the site that went to five feet in depth in areas that they project that would be stormwater facilities in the future. The results of that work is shared in the applicant's submission there. The applicant does share that based on that additional site work, that blasting will not be likely, and that most of the rock that was discovered was relatively soft shale that can be removed with normal mechanical equipment. The applicant did spend a considerable amount of time also on a floodplain analysis and updated what was submitted previously. That document has been revised in full and is dated May of '23. The applicant did study three different outfall analysis points. The report shares the pre-development calculations, a time concentration analysis, and provides a full floodplain cross-section analysis. One thing to note on that is that in the future, if this project were to be approved, ultimately, they would need to do a full demonstration that the 100-year floodplain is not being negatively impacted, and that would be done with a site plan. One other unique application consideration for this specific site is that we do have a major gas line that runs just to the east of the proposed project area, along and through the middle of the Sherwood Farm property. The applicant did and has provided their communications that they've had with Williams Transco, recently dated May of '22 and '23, just a couple weeks ago. Williams Pipeline officials did provide the applicant information regarding conditions and requirements that they will need to comply with during construction. And those requirements are reflected in an email communication that was shared with staff, and the applicant is willing to put as a condition of approval, excuse me, on top of this permit if successful. And those are any blasting within 300 feet of the gas pipeline, requires submission of a blast plan to Williams for review and approval, and that prior to construction for the gravel access road, which will potentially cross the pipeline, construction plans will be submitted to Williams, and they'll need to be, they'll in turn send a letter of no objection to the applicant and to the county. And then any work that's done on Williams right away, a representative may have to be on site and may require reimbursement agreement to be executed if that is the And just one reminder, as the Planning Commission, as you weigh into this case again tonight, there's, there's two findings that the Planning Commission is charged to find. One is your normal use permit findings under Article 17, your general health, safety, and welfare concerns, compliance with the comp plan. But then there's a specific finding when it comes to the comp plan, and that's the 2232 review, as was advertised. The Planning Commission will need to make that specific finding, as Neil read with the case introduction, that the, that the general location or approximate location and character is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan. And the staff didn't go back over our comp plan analysis, that's relatively unchanged throughout this project, because the locations remained unchanged. One thing that staff did point out in the, in the most recent staff report was that some work needed to be done on potential conditions of approval, if this were to receive approval. The applicant has provided a draft set of conditions that largely follows our ordinance and suggested policy conditions. They did add the Williams Pipeline conditions, and at this point, staff is largely supportive of what's suggested as conditions of approval. And there may need, the Planning Commission has the ability to further tweak those if you see fit to do that tonight as well, and the applicant is here and can certainly talk through that with you all as well. Mr. Neiman with Northridge Solar is here. He has prepared a presentation. I've highlighted the changes. He can share a lot more details about the changes that have occurred since April, if the Planning Commission likes, but he does have a presentation. Of course, this is advertised for a public hearing as well, so.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to open it up for that. Commissioner Price?
Ms. Chairman, I do have one thing. Sam, you mentioned the conditions for approval, and in the updated case analysis, it states, staff further recommends that Drambi Environmental Consultants' recommendations also be conditions of approval if the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors are so inclined. And I went to the Drambi report, and it, it looks like the two recommendations are complete an onsite wetland delineation and have the phonics confirmed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, and the second is conduct informal consultation with U.S. Forest Service and the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources. Now, those two aren't in their nine-June conditions of approval document. So I guess it would be either up to us or the board whether or not to include those, but I think I would need some, maybe some advice from staff as to whether or not those make sense.
Mr. Chairman, to Commissioner Price, those, those were two points, and those were brought out, you're right, in that DEC report, the most recent one. And those certainly could be recommended, conditions of approval, and I don't think the applicant has any objection to those or wouldn't have any. They're going to have to do that anyway. DEQ is going to require that to be done in their review for their permit by rule, their PBR permit, and we're going to need to see that for our site plan as well. But it will not hurt, as was mentioned in the previous, in the staff report, to add those conditions of approval, but I believe you're correct. I don't think they're listed specifically in the suggested conditions right now.
All right, Sam, and just one, just one other thing. I think I had asked this question the last time I looked at this, but if this is approved, then we have the potential of this Greenwood and the Amazon Data Center all being under some, some state of construction, all at the same time, within the same, you know, mile or mile and a half stretch of Route 3. So a lot of construction traffic going in and out. Staff have any concerns about, about, about that, and would they not have any concerns about that?
Yeah, it would be major activity, for sure, not only traffic-wise, but it would be, as far as erosion and sediment control inspections would be quite significant during any construction of that size. We do have help onboard for Greenwood. We would have help onboard with Northridge for those ENS or stormwater inspections. We have third-party help with that. But the area character as far as traffic, you would definitely notice that if they were all three hit at the same time. Route 3 is a major highway, though. It's a, it's a four-lane divided highway. Right now, it does have a pretty large carrying capacity that is not touched right now with current traffic patterns. So anywhere else in the county on secondary roads for, for that amount of traffic, that, that would be an impact. Here, a large part of that, especially for the Amazon Data Center and for the Northridge project, would be accessed directly off of Route 3.
Any other questions?
I just have comments or two. The, the remaining land around Sherwood, can they come back and, they could come back and ask us for more panels?
They, they could. It would require a separate review and application.
Right, but it would be under the three, the 300-acre limitation?
It, it potentially could. At that point, you're dealing with the same landowner, and then you're definitely running a risk, in my opinion, of exceeding what the intent was of that 300 acres, for sure.
Right, but they could do it.
They could, yes.
In the same way, because we don't have any kind of separation agreement
That's correct.
... under our policy, the people to the next side of them could do it. So this could grow.
That's correct. When the board was considering the ordinance and policy amendments, they certainly have the ability to do that, and they've, so far, have chosen not to do that.
Okay. Then the other question, all of the surety bonds that are being required per our ordinance, the dollar amount that they come to, who determines exactly if they're sufficient or not? Is it going to be a staff thing, or who is determining that?
Initially, it would be, we, we do have the ability to consult with our engineer that's on call to be able to do that, and we probably would with that. County Attorney's Office would also be tasked in helping review that surety agreement as well. But decommissioning-
I'm talking about the dollar amount.
The decom, yeah, and we would look at, we would look at that with the engineer. Basically, they're going to provide an estimate, and this is normal for road construction or other types of construction. The applicant's engineer will provide an estimate, and then we'll run our own estimate, our numbers against that to see how accurate that is, and then there's a contingency typically put on top of that.
Okay.
And in this case, they've stated their rough estimate of, I think it was about a million and a half for decommissioning upfront.
Right. All right, well, I'm concerned, because that doesn't sound like a lot. In the same way, when you start maintaining stormwater and maintaining landscaping, that can grow very quickly, and that's an opinion, not a fact. I don't know. All right, and then the next thing in the comments about the, on the traffic on Route 3 will be impacted.
Sure.
All right, so what does VDOT tell us if they're going to have constant access onto that road? It's going to, right now, there's a requirement that we not go 55 right through there. There's a 45 limit, but, you know, this is, is a primary access road for tourists and trucks, et cetera. And I don't see that the comment, "Well, it shouldn't be too bad, because it's a primary road." It seems like we should have some facts and data based on that comment.
Well, any, any site plan review will have, especially a significant size, they'll have to put together a full maintenance of traffic plan that VDOT will review. They, they just can't start construction. That's not how it happens. They'll have to submit a separate site plan, they'll have to submit a separate land use permit application, they'll have bonds with VDOT as well for, for transportation purposes. And that maintenance of traffic plan will determine whether they need flaggers on site, what type of signage they're going to have to put up to warn motorists that are up and down the highway. It's, it would be significant, especially if there's multiple sites, as was pointed out earlier. But those are, those are things that are done in detail, because VDOT is just as concerned as you are about maintaining the traffic flow on Route 3 or any highway in the county.
All right, and then the commuter group, I mean, if I was leaving out of Culpeper every day and having to go through that, I mean, it's a problem enough to go down 522 the last month.
Sure.
So I just don't really think that this is going to be a simple thing. I think it's going to impact people that are using that as a commuter route, et cetera, so I am concerned about that. And then the, the fact that they can keep adding on and adding on is also of concern. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, applicant is present, would like to make a presentation. Please come forward and state your full name.
Ken Neiman, Northridge Resources. Good evening. Sam has done a wonderful job of summarizing most of what I was going to say tonight, so at the risk of being redundant, I'm going to try to very quickly go through my presentation and then address, try to address some of the questions that Ms. Thornhill raised and others as well. The main, the main areas of focus for us in the last two months have been stormwater, geotechnical, floodplain, vegetative management, natural resources, and erosion control landscaping, site plan update, and addressing issues, concerns about the natural gas pipeline. As it relates to geotechnical, we did do a lot of additional work. We did some additional auger drilling, we did some excavations. I think the bottom line there is, most of the site has no bedrock or no rock, at least to a depth of three feet. Once we get past three or four feet, we did hit some rock, but, and so that's the bad news. The good news is that that rock was relatively soft, and based on that, we were able to break it apart with a very small excavator. So based on that, our feeling is that we'll be able to remove whatever rock we hit when we build the stormwater basins, using excavators and rippers and hoe rams. So the need to do blasting, which I understand is, is an issue, is relatively low. Obviously, I can't stand up here and say we will never have to blast, but I think it's very unlikely. And, and if we do, there are processes, there's procedures in place to deal with blasting in terms of alerting neighbors and pre-blast surveys and things like that. So I think there's generally a pretty good story to be told on the potential blasting At the risk of overstepping my, my level of knowledge here, as it relates to stormwater, and Ricky Hewitt is here, and to the extent we want to get into stormwater and floodplain analysis in a little more depth, I think the main issue here is we have addressed the concerns about stormwater. As a result, we are dealing, we're assuming that panels will be impervious, which was the big issue at the last hearing. And as a result of that, and some other, what we view as very conservative assumptions in terms of stormwater, I think we're comfortable now with a revised hydrology exhibit, which shows the location of the stormwater basins, the potential size, and are confident that we can deliver on the stormwater requirements that the DEQ and the county will require us to do. Again, that's a very high level. Happy to have Ricky answer additional questions if you have them. I threw this picture in just so you could see what a typical stormwater structure looks like in the early stages of a solar project. You can see the, the dykes, and you can see the overflow structures, and this is the early stage of construction where you see some of the initial racking posts installed into the ground. Again, on the floodplain, a couple of things to point out. We did evaluate the culvert on that creek or that stream on the west side of the project that hasn't, that wasn't addressed the first time. And the bottom line, again, on the floodplain is, we're confident that the project will not result in any net increase in the 100-year flood levels at the site or downstream. Vegetative management plan, again, we did sample the site, sent the, the soil samples to Virginia Tech. The bottom line there is, they've come up with some recommendations in terms of limestone requirements and fertilizer requirements, so that we can establish what they call a wildlife mixture, which is the type of ground cover that we would propose planning as part of our vegetation management plan. We did include a list of potential seed mixes that would do well on this site, as well as a couple of pollinator friendly, friendly grasses. Again, I throw this picture in there to show you what a well-established ground cover can look like, will look like, on a project that's been constructed and completed. We did do the natural resources inventory. We have, our consultant did that, Drambi, we have included a site, a, a plan sheet, which includes all the key features. Some of the overall results confirm no prime farmland on this site. There's potentially up to about 53 acres of wetlands per the National Wetlands Inventory. We will have to do a wetland delineation as part of the permit by rule process. It has to be certified by the Army Corps of Engineers. That's an absolute must, has to be done. There were no, there was no evidence of federal or state-listed threatened endangered species, nor critical habitat, and no evidence of the northern long-eared bat, which has now gone on the threatened and endangered list in the state. Some of the other things, the erosion and sediment control, we updated the map now to reflect the revised locations and the revised sizes of the stormwater basins, and tied that in with the vegetation management plan. Sam mentioned we revised the landscaping plan to add some additional buffer on the east side near the natural gas pipeline. We updated the preliminary site plan, and we did coordinate now with Williams Transco on the natural gas pipeline. This is the, this is very similar to the site plan you saw the first time. I'll point out two things. You now notice that there's some new stormwaters, stormwater basins, they're bigger than the ones that were there before as a result of the stormwater analysis that was done. This area of additional buffering is right here. It doesn't show up on this map, but it's been included on the landscape map. And the intent really was, to the extent that you might be able to see parts of the site from Route 3, this additional buffer should address that. So let me talk, address a few issues relative to Greenwood. The first point I would like to make is that, at least in terms of visuals, the only way you'll know that Greenwood and Northridge are adjacent to each other is if you're in an airplane or a hot air balloon. Can't see it from Baton Rouge, won't know it exists. Even from areas on Greenwood, you will not know that the Northridge project is there, at least from a visual standpoint. I think that's an important point. The issue of simultaneous construction has come up. It came up earlier. Greenwood, as Sam has mentioned, has not announced what their intentions are, but if you go to the PJM website, PJM is the Regional Transmission Organization that handles interconnection of large projects like Greenwood. If you go to the signed interconnection service agreement that Greenwood has with PJM, Greenwood is required to achieve commercial operations- by December 15th of 2025. That's a hard date. If you back up and assume that they have to start construction within, say, 12 to 15 months of that date, which is a reasonable assumption, because of all the work they have to do, it means they're gonna have to start construction on their site sometime next year. I would suggest or estimate it will be within the next 12 months. The Northridge project, on the other hand, because of the additional permitting, and assuming we even get a conditional use permit, because of the additional permitting we have to do, wetlands and all the other things, it'll be at least two years before we're able to start construction. So there should be probably as much as a year of separation between the start of the Greenwood construction and, I'm sorry, the start of the Greenwood construction and the start of our construction. Okay, so I'm gonna need some help going back. Keep going. Okay, right there. Thank you. I don't know about Amazon. I don't know when they're proposing to start, but at least in terms of Greenwood, I think there'll be quite a bit of separation, at least in terms of time. The issue of runoff, if there happens to be simultaneous construction, there is a small section of creek or stream between the two projects. Sam mentioned there'll be onsite inspectors. To the extent there's any runoff from either the Greenwood site or the Northridge site, we'll be able to identify it very quickly and get somebody to deal with it expeditiously. It's a very small section of land where there's a common border between the two. So again, I don't believe it'll be difficult to determine where any source of runoff is coming from. Sherwood Farms, as Sam mentioned, is about five parcels. It's 950 acres total. They're leasing 60 to Greenwood. They're leasing 355 to us. That leaves about 540 acres for existing agricultural use, which I think we probably would all agree is, maintains a significant agricultural output contribution to the Stevensburg area. It's important to understand, there's a lot left of solar. And I want to address the concern you had, Ms. Thornhill, about Our project is really confined in two ways. One is the available land. Here I go again. I'm gonna put this there. One is the available land. The other is the electrical output. We cannot produce more than 26 megawatts according to Dominion, because they have no capacity in the circuits from the site back to the Culpeper substation. So even if I got additional land from Sherwood, I can't build anymore because I'm constrained on the electrical side. So the concern about us coming back to ask for a bigger project is, it's just not feasible. And even if we did, it would involve a completely new use permit process. So those are the constraints that I hope sort of address the concern you raise. Maybe they do, maybe they don't.
Will you put that as a condition?
Pardon?
Will you add that to your condition list?
That we would be limited to, on the electrical side? Sure. Yes, I would do that. Yes. Yes. Add it to the list, Sam. I have no problem doing that. I'm sorry, would you go back again?
Ken, it does have a back button on it, I believe.
Well, you're right. You've seen this picture before. It's from Baton Road. Our site is way in the distance. Greenwood is in the forefront. That's where you'll see panels, but our site is way in the distance. And then this is my last slide, I promise. I think we've checked off all the boxes. At least, I like to think we have. At least in terms of the specifics for solar projects, it conformed, the project conforms to the comprehensive plan in terms of setbacks, total acreage, transmission, lack of transmission, substations, group parcels, decommissioning, native grasses, things like that. We conform to the solar policy, the new solar policy, which includes limiting the construction phase into no more than 100 acres. We comply with the new solar ordinance, including, among other things, the limit of no more than 300 acres of solar for a particular project. And again, as a final point, again, the property owners who are here tonight view this as a good use of their land. They want to keep it as agricultural land, or at least most of it. And so they're obviously very supportive of the project. So with that, I will wrap. Happy to answer any questions now or later.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. At this time, let's open it up for questions from the commissioners for the applicant. Mr. Price?
Thanks very much. Mr. Neiman, I do have a couple. So I noticed that there's the potential of using the Sherwood Farm Road, where it gets cut straight across the Carricko Mills Road as the main way in and out, or possibly another entrance, I think, further to the west. So have you determined where the main entrance is gonna be?
No, not yet. The likely entrance is going to be Sherwood Farm Road. I mentioned at the last meeting that one of the advantages of moving it further west is we avoid having to cross the 100-year floodplain, which has obvious advantages. And there may be some wetlands over there. And it's a shorter road. But I would like to be, I'd like to have the ability to at least have that as an option, subject to further wetlands delineation, subject to further discussions with VDOT and the county. But our number one option is the existing Sherwood Farm entrance.
Okay. Well, maybe I should ask this to staff as well. So Sam, should we know where the main entrance is going to be before we vote on the conditional use permit, or is that something that would come in the site plan phase?
In my opinion, with this particular property, it does have significant drainage on Route 3. They have an existing entrance that lines up across from Carricko Mills, which is the Sherwood Farm entrance today. That would be my, when looking at it, would be the, and that's what's, one of the entrances that's proposed, that would be the preferred location. But the one further to the west also has a median break. It also has a left turn lane. So in my opinion, it could be an adequate entrance, too, for the project as well. I don't disagree with leaving it a flexibility. I think a site plan would determine, and we'd get VDOT further concurrent through that process, but I don't know that it matters at this stage, because I think they're close enough. They're both adequate entrances, potentially for the commercial side of things, so.
Okay. Mr. Neiman, I understand that some of the newer types of solar panels, and I'm not sure if the couple of varieties that you provide information on are these types, but some now can collect light reflected from the ground and then generate electricity from underneath. So would your panels be able to do that? Would that be, make it possible to generate more than 26 megawatts? But you're capped at 26 megawatts?
I'm capped. Yeah, it's important. Yes, it's a bi, what's called a bifacial solar panel. But actually, it's higher efficiency, and it does collect solar energy from the backside as well as the frontside. But again, and we may use those panels. By the time this project is engineered and the equipment is procured, those may be the panels of choice. I don't know yet, though. But again, we're capped on the total output.
Yeah.
So what that would do, though, is if we had more efficient panels, is it would reduce the size of our footprint. Because again, we're capped on the output side. So instead of 250 acres, maybe we need 240, or whatever the number is. As every year that technology gets better and the panel efficiency goes up and up.
You've also got several wildlife corridors through the site. So how do you let the wildlife in and out and still keep the site secure?
Well, we have to have a fence in each section. So, I mean, that's just the reality. We can't cross those streams. So the wildlife would be free to come up. For example, come up the gas transmission right of way. That'll be open and accessible from the north and the south. These streams would be accessible. So we'll have to, the fencing will have to go around the streams and around, in the case of wetlands, we'd have to put it around the wetlands as well.
Okay. But that doesn't create a security vulnerability?
Well, it's just more, it's more effort on the part of maintenance people when they come in. The gates will be locked.
Yeah.
And they'll have to unlock each of the gates to each of the sections.
Okay. And one final thing for me, and this is a question that I've had posed by members of the community. So the solar applicants that we've had so far lease the land from an owner for 30, 35 years. But it seems that the amount that you would spend to lease the land for 30 or 35 years would be a lot more than if you bought the land outright. So what is your response to that question that I've gotten a number of times?
Well, first of all, we defer to the landowner. If he would like to sell his land, we'll buy it. If he would rather lease it, keep it in the family, which many farmers want to do, I would say, in my experience, 70%, 80% want to lease the land as opposed to sell it. But what we also do is we do a net present value analysis of the lease price versus a purchase price. And they're pretty close together. Again, it depends on what the landowner wants. Some want to sell the land, take the money, and do other things with it. They want to get out of farming. Again, others, like the Kelseys and Sherwood, they want to keep it in the family to continue to farm it.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, it does. So your analysis basically, it's a bit of a wash in terms of cost to you or to a developer?
Yeah, it is. It is.
Okay. All right. That's all from me, Mr. Neiman.
Other questions? Commissioner Holmes?
So would you guys be open to adding to the condition that you guys would establish and maintain and comply with a nutrient management plan?
I think that's already a requirement. It's already a requirement, you mean, in terms of?
What's the basis? Are you N-based, P-based? What are you basing it on?
Come on, Ricky. You weren't gonna get off the hook tonight.
Good evening. I think the answer is yes. Ultimately, a nutrient management plan. It's additional hurdle, but if that would be a condition of the approval, I don't know that that would, I'd prefer more time to really think about just all the potentials of hesitancy there. But I, at this point, I don't think it's worth, I think it's worth pursuing as an option pretty positively.
Well, just from my indication, can you help, what is it exactly you're asking?
So basically, you have to have, so agriculture land of significant size has to have a nutrient management plan where they can only apply fertilizer based, and in Virginia, it's P-based because of all the Chesapeake Bay issues. So things can only be applied, like phosphorus can only be applied at a certain level that will equal what that crop's output is. And you guys don't really have a crop outputting. So potentially, you guys are gonna overapply phosphorus, which is gonna leach into the water systems and add to the phosphorus contamination that we have in the Chesapeake Bay.
I don't want to do that. I'm not sure how to answer the question. I mean, we want to comply with whatever the regulations are relative to phosphorus. I know the issue of nutrient credits has come up. We're limited as to how many we can purchase. We've talked about, you know, methods for minimizing the number of credits that we would have to purchase. And we're prepared to stipulate that we'll work with the county to do whatever is feasible to minimize the number of credits that would need to be purchased. Beyond that, I'm not, I'm not really sure where we go with this.
Okay.
I think she's asking a different question, unrelated to stormwater detention.
Yeah.
It's about, you know, how you treat the site with fertilizer and how you maintain it.
Well, we, you know, the soil analysis did give a recommendation in terms of fertilizer, phosphorus, and potassium, and one other thing.
Nitrogen?
Yeah. I guess the expectation would be that we would follow those guidelines in order to establish the ground cover.
Right. But then you're gonna, year over year, you're still gonna end up applying fertilizer. And my point is that grass mix and pollinator mix that you have is not really yielding anything. But in your plan, you have written that you will continue to apply fertilizer. And that gives that potential for that phosphorus leaching, which leads to fish kills in the bay.
Well, was the language more, come on, Ricky, was the language more that fertilizer would be added if necessary or as needed?
If I remember correctly, it said apply yearly. I don't know. I gotta read back there and find it.
I had a few comments. It's a good point. There's a couple of things in there about this, the limitations of the Virginia runoff reduction method that calculates the nutrient load on the site like this. And there's three categories. There's impervious, there's managed turf, and then there is forested open space. And one of the limitations I see in that, and others have noticed, is that the category of managed turf is quite broad. It is used for residential developments where people have really nice fescue lawns. And it also can include, and in this case, does include the grassed areas that are on this site. And so when we do the VRRM water quality calculation to determine what the nutrient load is, we are applying, in this case, the panels as impervious. And they're also, I would say, different than an impervious area of a Walmart parking lot or something with oils and trash and breeze and that sort of thing. And so I've mentioned both of those things to say, ultimately, the managed turf and the impervious here, I think, is on the conservative end, conservative end of what a nutrient load would be equivalent to a residential neighborhood in the type of grasses that are maintained, managed turf there. But also, so that's calculated. And then in the water quality calculation, we've determined that, and also have done an assessment of what BMPs would be necessary in order to remove the nutrient load down to the levels on which DEQ requires for making sure that the watershed is maintained.
I still would, would want the condition of having a active and established and maintained nutrient management plan.
And it's not unheard of, and the many, many projects I've worked on, I have seen it one time.
Then my other question, I don't know if you can speak on this, or the actual property owners, but when was the last time that the property owners themselves actively farmed that land?
Well, I don't wanna, I mean, it's been timbered, as you know. There is a section over here, this area in here is open grassland, so that's actively used to raise cattle. So timber, just timber and cattle. That's all that's been on that land for, I think, forever, at least for the last 30 years.
Okay.
The farmland, there's plenty of farmland, but it's all over here. And of course, we're not in that area. They're raising crops, corn and soybeans, I believe.
The family is, or it's leased out?
Well, again, I believe they lease the land to a territory. But they can clarify that.
Okay. Other questions? Commissioner Kilby?
So in some of those regards, I mean, I think what my fellow commissioner here was asking for was about a nutrient management plan, which is different than how you treat phosphorus and nitrogen in a stormwater management facility. So I think, you know, that's dealing with soil scientists and it's dealing with landscape architecture and things of that nature. So my suggestion would be is, as part of the conditional approval, potentially, you would want to go back and have a nutrient management plan as part of the project. And that's something that could be worked out between now and board supervisors, if that's something that you're willing to entertain. I think that a couple other items that, at least that I had, was the maintenance of the stormwater management facilities that are shown on the plan. I think it would be helpful to have notes on the conceptual use permit, that the maintenance would be maintained by you until such time as is would be maintained by you until such time as it's decommissioned and then it would revert back to the owner, or something along those lines, assuring that the facilities are going to be maintained because while candidly, staff can certainly go out and inspect those facilities, usually they're doing the inspections during construction, but not necessarily during the life of the project, every rain event, you know, per se. So that would be something that you'd want to have a maintenance agreement, which would be part of the site plan. But I think some verbiage in there, I think, would be helpful if you're willing to entertain that.
As a condition.
As a condition, yeah. And then the last one I had was dealing with the nutrient calculations. I know in the calculations, there is some verbiage in there about using off-site credits, which is certainly allowed by DEQ, you know, from that perspective. But I think, given that this is a zoning document, it would be good to potentially condition that you would provide BMPs within the site to the maximum extent practicable, somewhere in the order of seventy-five to eighty percent of the site being treated for nutrient control. So, I think those would be some of the conditions I would be interested in. And then if you do add BMPs on site, that would need to also be bonded to Ms. Thornhill's comment there. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Thornhill?
So, I just had one more. It's kind of a question, when you keep referring to the twenty-six megawatt cap, maximum cap that Dominion places on it, is that correct? Dominion's cap?
Well, let me take a second, just so everybody understands the background. When we first met with Dominion, with this site, they looked, they did an initial evaluation of the circuits that came out of the Culpeper substation back to the site. And they said, based on our preliminary analysis, we think we could probably put up to plus or minus twenty-six megawatts on those circuits. So that was the basis for our application with Dominion. If you read the application, it says, we'd like you, Dominion, to evaluate for as much as that circuit would hold. But as a practical matter, I think if we get an additional megawatt more, we'd be lucky. I actually expect it's going to go down. But that was the basis for the twenty-six megawatts. It was the input that we got from Dominion two years ago when we first looked at this site.
So with all the improvements that they're making on their lines and stations and such, do you think that it would increase because they have improved their transmission capability?
No, no.
It's not going to?
No. Because this is distribution.
Yeah.
As opposed to all the other stuff you see, including Greenwood is all transmission.
Okay.
So, that will have no impact on our project, two completely separate systems.
Right. I was just still thinking about the expansion capability. If they can take more, can you build more? But you already told me you would not build more.
I can't. I can't. I can't build any more than what their circuits will allow and what the site will...
At the time of application. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Burton?
I just have a detail about the landscape plan. And this is a question to you and your understanding, and then you as the zoning administrator, your understanding. Having seen the hundred-foot of natural timber in person, it's rather thick in most places and it does its job. But in some cases, the understory is sparse. And I'm just curious, over time, if it's sparse near the most residential uses nearby, if when you come to do your inventory at the site plan stage, when will you plant more and when will you say, hey, we've planted enough, we've provided the natural timber? And when will you supplement, at that point at which you will supplement?
Well, it's a good question. And one I frankly hadn't anticipated.
And like I say, you have very few adjacent landowners and, but a few residences. And I want to make sure those residences are covered, if they want to be covered from that visibility.
Your concern is what happens five years down the road or ten years down the road?
That is a concern, but even at present day, if you can see through, are you going to plan?
Yeah, I think present days, I'm more comfortable with addressing that because once we get in there and we build, if there's, if anybody can see the site from the adjacent houses, it suggests we need more infill. And we're prepared to do that. I think that we've addressed, prepared to do that, in particular, along the southern boundary here, because some of the trees are pretty thin. The other house you're talking about is up here. There's a home over here. So to the extent, and this will all be part of the final landscaping plan that's submitted as part of this final site plan, to the extent that there is visibility, we'll have to infill with evergreens or whatever, you know, fifteen-foot evergreens or whatever, you know, the county wants us to do.
Okay.
So I think that's, I think that's easy to address as part of, in the preliminary or the vegetated, or, I'm sorry, the landscaping plan that's submitted as part of the final site plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Clancy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've talked about a lot of technical things tonight. One of the concerns that I have with, and we're charged with as commissioners, is to make sure that this is good for our community. There's a lot of, I've heard a lot of animosity over solar farms, period, doesn't matter where they are, it's not your fault, it's just solar farm, that's kind of how it's looked at. What's been done to mitigate that? And I know you said you don't have a lot of adjoining neighbors, that's been mentioned earlier tonight. But what we do have is a lot of residents in that corridor that are probably sitting here right now, behind you, that are not happy. I know who they are. I see the faces every time these meetings happen. Has there been a chance, and I know you said, obviously, the homeowner or the landowner wants this to happen, they're happy with it, they think it's a good fit with the land. Their neighbors and some other folks like that might, may disagree. Have you done anything to reach out to them, to like walk the property, show them like, listen, this is not going to be a watershed problem because we're covered? Anything?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are a couple of nearby neighbors that are here tonight, and I believe they're going to speak.
Okay.
I mentioned last time, I did reach out to Citizens for Responsible Solar, the Battlefield Trust. There's two others, it slips my mind. So I have reached out, and in some cases, I've talked to those folks. You know, I'm not delusional. I know that I'm not going to convince them to necessarily change their position. My only point was, I want you at least to understand what the project is and what it isn't, you know, what the project's attributes are. And then you can make up your own mind as to whether or not you can support it. Again, at least in terms of the mechanics of this process, I think we've checked off the boxes. And again, among all, probably, I still think that the strongest selling point of this project is really twofold. One is you can't see it. You can't see it. I know it's right next to Greenwood. I get it. I understand that. But you can't see it, again, unless you're up in the air in an airplane. That and the fact that this power will go back to Culpeper Substation, and it will be distributed locally. Electricity is like water, takes the path of least resistance. So that power, when it hits the Culpeper Substation, is immediately going out to the homes and businesses in Culpeper. I think that's an important thing for people to recognize. It's not dependent on, granted, it's dependent on the circuits from the site back to Culpeper, but transmission system, it's separate from the transmission system. So I think that's, in terms of local content, if you want to use that phrase, I think that's a selling point that people should at least consider.
Thank you for that answer. How far are the transmission lines from the current property that you would have to tap into? How far do you have to go to reach them?
It's about four tenths of a mile.
Okay. It's off-property or on-property?
So what we'll do is, the, all the power that's generated in the site will be collected here, and then...
And that's not a substation?
No. It's five wooden poles.
Okay.
And there'll be meters on it and regulators and transformers and breakers. And I have a picture of that, or I had one in the... So it'll be collected there, and then it'll run north right along the property line and tie into the existing Dominion distribution system right there on Route Three West. And that's about four tenths of a mile, three to four tenths of a mile.
And going back to construction, that road is in prime agricultural land, in forestal land, according to the documents that I have in front of me, the access road, the proposed access road. If you're under, how long is the project going to take? And when, if you were to get approved, when do you expect to break ground?
I think roughly two years from now, so, you know, second or third quarter of twenty-five, twenty-two.
So potentially a year into Greenwood's ramp-up? So we got traffic on both sides?
Well, yeah. I mean, of course, our traffic is coming strictly off of Route Three, not that road and some of the others. But yeah, I mean, if it's a year, if they're a year apart, there'll be some overlap.
And how long do you expect construction to take on our project?
I think it would, realistically, it's probably seven to nine months, maybe ten months total.
Okay. So just under a year?
Yeah, under a year.
Weather, whatever, right? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. I've got a couple of questions also. Just curious, in your submission here, in the landscape plan, it talked about, it says Northridge Culpeper Solar, it used to say will follow the Virginia Pollinator Smart Program. You crossed out will and put in tends. And I guess I'm curious as why?
Well, it's pretty simple. What we continue to hear is the ability to obtain these grasses can be difficult. So I don't want, I was reluctant to commit to something that I, you know, in two years from now, say, listen, I have a problem, I can't get the grasses.
Okay.
So the intent is to try these best efforts to get those grasses and see the extent that they're available, we would put them in. But we need a little bit of, you know, wiggle room, if you will, in case they're not available.
Okay. And I think we discussed this a little earlier, the DEC recommendations. I think somebody asked if that'd be included in part of the conditions, and you've got no trouble with that?
No problem.
Okay.
We have to do that, the wetlands and other things anyway.
Okay. Also, you do have in your conditions, the conditions from the Williams Company with the pipeline, but that one sentence was left out at the very end. And the last comment said, any work on Williams right away will require Williams to be on site. And that's what you have in your thing. But it also goes on and says, and may require reimbursement agreement to be executed before construction begins. Was that purposely taken out?
No.
Any problem putting that back in?
Happy to include it.
Okay.
Because they're going to insist on it anyway.
Okay. Let's see. That's another one. I understand that you think that's going to be minimal and so forth. In your application, it says that you're going to be conscious of that and basically do everything you can not to have impacts. Would you have any problem putting in there that you would be liable for any damages to surrounding properties due to blasting?
I've said, and I'll stick with, stick by what I've said, that we would address damages that were proved to be the result of our activities.
Okay. Could we put that as a condition?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a little bit of a slippery slope. The challenge is knowing what we caused versus what might have been predicted.
Right.
But I'm okay putting that as a...
I just don't want our homeowners and landowners to have to go to, through suing somebody and, you know, having them take five years to get resolved. Okay? Let's see. I think that was my last one. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
One last one.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, you showed a photograph a while ago of solar panels with a very lush growth of grass underneath. So your site here will look like that once you're done. I mean, you can guarantee that's what it will, I mean, that's your intent, that's what it will look like, even in the areas where the timber operation was, it's now just scraps of trees and things?
We have to establish the ground cover, yes. You know, whether it looks, those grasses are exactly the same. But yes, it'll, it has to. We've got to establish the ground cover under the panels as well as between the panels.
Yeah. And then how soon after construction do you see a healthy growth of grass?
Well, I think realistically, by the time it's really mature, it's probably three years, that, couple of growing seasons.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
And I'm sorry, I found one other thing, and that is in your conditions, which are, basically, you went back and looked at the ordinance and reiterated a lot of that stuff. But, and this may be just a typo, in the landscaping plan, it says, the final landscaping plan shall be submitted with the site plan approval and reflect all existing vegetation and shall include a tree inventory, et cetera. If I look at the ordinance, it doesn't quite say that. It says the preliminary plan will reflect all existing vegetation. So any problem with making that consistent with what's in the ordinance?
Yeah? No.
Okay.
I think it says that, right?
Well, it says, the final landscape plan shall be submitted with the site plan approval and reflect all existing vegetation. The ordinance says that the preliminary plan must identify all existing vegetation.
Which we have.
Yeah. And your preliminary plan does that. Okay. So can we make that change? Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All questions have been asked and answered. At this point in time, we'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And anybody who would like to speak on the matter, please raise your hand. You'll be identified. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone. You'll have three minutes to speak, and please give us your name and your district, please. Gentlemen in the green shirt, please.
How are you guys? My name is David Kilby. And I am the manager of the partnership that owns Sherwood Farm. It's a family partnership. Everybody that is a partner is a family man. Today, my family owns, yeah, I'm sorry. We're a family business. It's a huge asset split among a bunch of little kids, but we have to make money. It can't be a burden to them. It should provide some sort of resource, or we should sell it. So my objective is to get a resource that supports the family farm. Farm has two major soil types. On the eastern edge, eastern half, maybe a little more than half, it's a red soil. Very fertile, very productive, productive, very easy to farm. To the west of it, from about the house on out, mostly this, it's blackjack. There's a ridge that you can see, and the ridge is a result of volcanic rift, more than yesterday, that threw up clay and covered the topsoil with, the top with clay. Originally, it was a red soil, or red shale that resulted as a product of a Triassic lake pit. But the rift cooked the soil to the west. And as a result, we have a very big gravel pit in Stevensburg, one in Manassas, one in Warrington, a couple down the line as well. And those are all very old. That leaves me with the soil. Blackjack is, has a very high clay content, which makes it very difficult to work with. In the summer, it gets as hard as a rock, and in the winter, you can't, you can barely walk on it because it's so soft. I tried to farm blackjack forty years ago, and I tried corn, wheat. I didn't try soybeans because we didn't have soybeans back there, back then. Sunflower, which provided great dove hunting, but no money.
Excuse me, sir, we're gonna have to ask you to conclude your, your presentation, you're gone over the three minutes, and we need to keep things moving, please.
I got how many minutes left?
None.
Okay, I get, I get right to the end if approved.
Please wrap it up, yeah, just wrap it up.
This piece of land, which is blackjack, and to answer your question from earlier, I planted it in Loblawli Pine thirty-five years ago, and we cut the last of them this year. So, the last time it was farmed was June, June of this year. This piece of property is hidden, it's not agricultural prime land, has no historic significance, it does have one importance, and that is, this project will allow us to keep the rest of the farm as a beautiful, productive farm.
Okay.
The red soil is great.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to make a statement? Sir?
My name is Kerr Chase, and I live immediately south of the project, so I'm in parcel fifty-four, is it, is there a pointer? I'm in parcel fifty-four twenty-three A one, immediately south. So, Greenwood is right there, and Northridge is there, so I might be the one guy that can see both of them all day, every day, forever. So, to that point, we had, and I'm also part owner in the parcel beside it, fifty-four twenty-three A. To that point, we had that appraised recently for a different reason altogether, and the appraiser mentioned that if this pro- if this had been installed when doing the appraisal, he would have knocked twenty-five percent off the property value. That represents a big piece of my family's worth, or, you know, financial worth. So, to that point, I appreciate Mr. Burton's comment about the buffer, that's very important to us as landowners to the south, and I am interested in the future maintenance of the buffer, because we're talking about, unlike the establishing the grass growth, which can take easily a year to establish, the trees are a little bit different because we're talking about, you know, some of them are gonna die off, and they have to reach a certain height in order to be useful as a buffer. So, I, I, we as landowners to the south are interested in the future maintenance throughout the maintenance of the project of that buffer area. As an aside, we also, we have one point of ingress and egress, which is Mountain View Farm Road, we own a chunk of it, and then we have a right-of-way through the Kelceys, a part of it. We maintain that ourselves, the whole thing ourselves, so we are interested in the not damaging that road, a hundred percent of the cost to maintain that road falls on us, so we're very interested in that being addressed and kind of rock solid before this, before either this or Greenwood, for that matter, gets started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Laura Kelsey, and I will definitely stay under three minutes, and my family owns Sherwood Farm, which I'm sure you already know. For the past three years, I have been listening to various proposals for solar projects in this county and in Faukeer County, and I have learned a lot. And I just wanna make three points about this particular project, which is requesting approval from the commissioners this evening. Number one, the installation of solar on non-prime agricultural land is an excellent use, they've already talked about how you can't farm it. Number two, the panels will not be visible, visible to anyone except possibly Kerr. Number three, the power will go directly to the Culpeper substation. These reasons form the essence of why this project should be approved, but even on top of that, it's important to our family to keep our family farm and continue to farm it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Susan Ralston, and I live in Stevensburg. Three hundred acres of solar on farmland is still too big for me, I'm never going to approve of utility-scale solar on farmland. Solar belongs on industrial zone land, marginal or contaminated land, along highways, and on commercial and residential roofs, rooftops. Small-scale solar for the landowner's personal use to supplement existing power is also fine, but the biggest problem with this project is that it is directly adjacent to the approved Greenwood solar site, which is a thousand acres of solar on farmland. It doesn't matter that you can't tell visually that they are adjacent, they, they are adjacent. I oppose the Northridge project because it violates the spirit of the new solar ordinance, which restricts solar projects to three hundred acres. This is not a three hundred acre project, it makes the one thousand acre project thirteen hundred acres. We shouldn't allow developers to put multiple three hundred acre projects together to make bigger ones. Maroon Solar tried it, and Northridge is trying to get around the limit, it should be denied. Otherwise, you are setting a precedent, and we won't be able to prevent future developers from also trying this. Greenwood Solar hasn't even started construction yet, and we don't know if they can abide by the additional conditions imposed at their site plan hearing. So, why should we rush to approve yet another project right next to Greenwood? We don't want thirteen hundred acres of solar on farmland in this rural district, shouldn't we wait until Greenwood is constructed to see if the impact of that site is on the neighborhood, on the environment and the land, especially the farms downstream? You heard from the landowners at the Greenwood site plan hearing that their concerns are with regard to the water, that threat would now be increased. We presented specific cases where developers have not lived up to their promises at site approval in other rural counties in Virginia, such as Spotsylvania, Louisa, Mecklenburg, Essex, Buckingham, to name a few. Let's wait to see what happens with Greenwood Solar, there's no rush to approve more solar in the county unless it is appropriately sited on industrial zone land, so thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Sir?
Good evening, members of the planning commission, never trust a developer that does not have the work to promote, projector remote. Here we go again, a data dump of over two hundred pages, and they want you to evaluate them in a couple of days. They had over sixty days to comply to your answers and questions, but yet, they want you to evaluate them in three or four days. They call themselves professionals for years of experience, so why didn't they have it done right the first time? This is the same trickery that these developers try over and over, time and time again. Deny this application now so we can go home. How many times are you gonna allow them to insult you? This application is industrial solar, not agricultural, a direct violation of our comprehensive plan. The applicant doesn't even actually farm their own land, they don't even live in Culpeper, they don't even vote in Culpeper, they don't even worship in Culpeper, they are absent. Do you remember when one of the developer's lawyers told the board of supervisors that if it wasn't in the Ortons, that the Culpeper County cannot make them adhere to that? Let's get closer to home. Remember when Greenwood Solar lawyer told you members that he wasn't going to apply with any of the additional conditions that you placed on him? Matter of fact, he was talking to Lance directly when he said that. The bottom line is, is that they will say anything to get this thing approved. It's time for you all to wake up, this is a violation of our comp plan, which is, which is planned for agriculture use. More wasted time, thousands of dollars of Culpeper taxpayers' money going to play, planning commission members, board of supervisors, and staff, wasting more of our time. Look at Spotsylvania and all the lawsuits that were against the solar developers. Don't blame Washington for this problem, this is a problem that Culpeper-owned elected officials created by violating their own comprehensive plan. We, we are, we're here when Bill Chase admitted to taking funds for the developers while still voting and evaluating the Greenwood application. Some describe it as unethical and immoral, while others call it simply disgusting. Every one of you know this application is in direct violation of our comprehensive plan, and not one of you would approve it if the construction was in your neighborhood. Land and home are purchased based on the projections and guidelines outlined in the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan shows these areas as agricultural. When you dismiss and violate the comprehensive plan, you expose yourself to individuals as a law, as a civil lawsuit. It's your responsibility to comply with the guidance outlined in a comprehensive plan. By law, you can be held liable for your actions and inactions, so please comply with the comprehensive plan. The bottom line is just, the county can't and has no means to find the developers for non-compliance. You Culpeper Planning Commission members simply haven't had ample time to review this application. I hate to say this, but most of you fall short of having the ability to properly evaluate this application. This application needs to be reviewed by a third party, which is paid by the applicant, not the Culpeper County residents. If you choose not to, you could be held liable for damages and harm to any other surrounding properties and surrounding neighborhoods.
Excuse me, sir, can I ask you to wrap it up?
I am, just a last, sorry.
Thank you.
So, please do your job, and I appreciate all your efforts, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, I'm Paige Kelsey Wessel, family member and part owner of Sherwood Farm. I would like to thank the commissioners for their time in reviewing the application for Northridge Culpeper Solar Project. On the Piedmont Environmental Council website, the benefits of solar power are summarized as follows. The benefits of solar power are multi-fold, providing peak power close to the demand, energy security, cost savings, local employment opportunities, and emission reductions. This could be a perfect description, description of Northridge Solar. The renewable energy produced from solar panels will help support the local power grid by providing supplemental energy to the local community without placing demands on the county resources. The proposed site located is within easy access to a four-lane divided highway, Route Three East, for the temporary construction timeline with greatly reduced traffic when construction has been completed. The proposed solar farm is surrounded by our family farm. We have family members that live there, we have family members that have cattle there, my brother grows crops there, on the farmable, usable acreage. The land that the site, the proposed site is on is of poor quality, it's not suitable for growing crops, nor for livestock to graze upon. The Northridge Solar Project located on this particular site would help to sustain the agricultural land use of farmable acres while preserving the rural values, views of the surrounding property. I'm respectfully requesting the commission recommend to the board of supervisors the approval of the Northridge Culpeper Solar Project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? Sir?
Hello, my name's Dwight Wessel, I'm here in support of Northridge Solar. I'd like to address a couple of issues that have come up. The proposed project is on the eastbound side of Route Three, but in this area, there's at least a mile visibility, so any traffic is easily seen. There are other businesses nearby here on both sides of Route Three, so there is, visibility is excellent also. There are discussions of using industrial land for solar. I'd like to say that solar really doesn't need the resources that your industrial land has, that Culpeper has, and I would hope that this land would be reserved for well-paying manufacturing jobs versus a solar farm that does not need access to sewer, water, or anything like that. Solar Farm is not asking for anyone to make a decision on next school buses, teachers, or anything like this. Solar projects can complement other businesses in the community, I appreciate your support.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tiffany Kelsey, I am one of the partners in the Sherwood Farm, and I don't know if this is within your purview, but we would really love some rain, so I don't know if y'all can request that, but Sherwood would be great. We are currently looking at a simple question, which is, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, just one minute, we have a microphone issue? Okay.
Okay, I'll stand closer, is that better? Okay.
Thank you.
So, this project would allow us to put three hundred acres of approximately a thousand acre farm into solar and allow us to therefore keep the rest of it as our farm. This is something we love, we love this farm, this is very emotionally, we're very attached to it, and my whole life, we've dreaded the time when my grandparents passed and we would have to inevitably sell it, and the, the vision in my head of it subdivided into houses was just heartbreaking. This is the one chance that I can imagine where actually our kids and grandkids might get to know the farm that we have known, because otherwise, I think it would probably go to development. So, thank you for considering our application, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Any other fun, any other comments? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. All right, so we've heard from the staff, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the community, and we've got the guidance provided from the solar policy and the comprehensive plan, and the direction of the solar ordinance. So, at this point in time, before we go on and try to make some decisions here, I'll open it up and ask if there are any further questions or discussion from the...
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
And the applicant. In answering Mr. Kerr's question, is there any language present that I've missed that says, "The private road will be maintained through the, through the project that you're, you're working with?" That the road will be preserved through the duration of the construction period? I, I hadn't seen a... I'm just curious, did you address the language that the private road through the project?
Oh, the private road, okay.
Private, yeah. And that does bring us up to that culvert situation, but I understand that you explained that, how it worked out.
Well, we, we will not, we will not, Northridge will not use Mountain View Farm Road.
Okay.
Our only entrance, our only access during construction operations is off Route Three, a new road that we will build off Route Three to the site. Obviously, however, we'll have to cross Mountain View Farm Road in order to get down in that southwest corner during construction. And for operations. But, again, we'll, we'll bond the construction to the extent we damage that.
To the extent we damage that road, we'll repair it. I don't expect the traffic will be that severe, much of it, but certainly, we're prepared to stipulate that we'll maintain, we'll certainly fix any damage that we do as a result of construction.
Okay.
But once construction's over, that, we will not have any need for that.
Right. I understand. Thank you. Uh, no.
Any other questions or discussion?
Question for staff, really, and I think I posed this in an email as well. I'm just curious as to an open answer about the ownership of Sherwood and existing already-approved projects. Is there, are they attached to any other projects that are already approved?
To my knowledge, to answer your question, no, they're not. They have the sixty acres of approximate Greenwood and then this proposal here.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Comments, discussion? Okay, so we've got two things to do. One is a finding and one is a recommendation, so I'll open it up for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the case U-2236-22-1 is not in substantial accord with Section 15.2-2232 of the comprehensive plan specifically regarding the general location as it is zoned A1 and is shown as ag and rural and the future land used, and according to the soil classifications that were provided, eighty-four, eighty-point-four percent of that land is either prime farmland or farmland of statewide importance.
Second? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. So, all in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 I'm sorry, can we do that? One, two, three, four. Okay, all opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, that's one part of the finding, so...
But we can still recommend...
That's a significant part of the finding, but that's one part of the finding that the planning commission's charged to make tonight.
Okay.
That's your substantial accord finding, but you still, and my recommendation, do need to process the use permit as well.
Okay, so I need another motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
The commission can determine that this project, as planned, is in substantial conformance with the utility-scale solar policy, and by extension, the general location, character, and extent of this is substantially in accord with the adopted 2023 comprehensive plan or part thereof. The request complies with Article 17.7, Standards and Procedures for Renewable Energy and Generation Utility-Scale Solar Facilities. Therefore, I move to recommend approval with conditions for case number and request U-2236-22-1, conditional use permit for a utility-scale solar generation facility on tax map parcel 54, parcels 22, 23, 25, 25C, located within the Stevensburg Magisterial District. Conditions in the, conditions are referenced in the Northridge Culpeper Solar Project Proposed Conditional Use Permit Conditions and Terms Draft, dated June 9, 2023, with the following changes or additions. I'll take help on this. We would have a nutrient management plan at final site plan that would address the fertilizer, phosphorus, and nitrogen. We'd have perpetual maintenance of the stormwater facilities until decommissioning. We'd clarify that we need best management practices that would result in seventy-five to eighty percent of nutrient removal. And as far as blasting, you would be responsible, state that you're responsible for damages proven to be caused by the project blasting, and a commitment to Mountain View Farm Road being maintained and repaired at damage during construction.
Any other, any motions or any additions to that motion?
Do we also want to specify the two conditions from DEC?
Would you help me state those to refresh my memory?
Yes, sir. I have them right here. Complete and onsite wetland delineation have the findings confirmed by the US Army Corps of Engineers, and conduct informal consultation with the Forest Service and the Virginia Department of Wildlife Resources.
So added.
Thank you.
Any other additions? I had one, I had one about the pipeline, adding that last sentence that may require monetary plan before they go ahead and make any changes.
So added.
Okay.
Was there anything about the maintenance of the buffer?
Oh, good point. I brought that up. All right. Then, let's see. Commitment to ensuring the substantial screening in addition to existing buffers. Does that make sense?
I think maintenance of the proposed screening over time, right? That's what you're looking for.
Okay, okay, maintenance of, okay, so added.
A second.
Have we been clear enough that we have that documented? Okay. Okay, we have a second?
All right, wait.
Okay.
I want a discussion.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, I know that. All right, so now we have, can you read back all of that and make sure you have it correctly? Probably not, so I want to make sure.
Well, I can return it. Let's see, so in addition to the conditions that the applicant submitted, we have a nutrient management plan at the final site plan to adjust fertilizer, phosphorus, and nitrogen. I made a little mark to review that time on there, so I can make sure I get that language right. Seventy-four to eighty percent about nutrient removal. You're gonna read that again when I listen to my recording. They will, the damages done during blasting will be, I don't know.
Paid by the applicant.
Yeah, paid by the applicant, thank you. Commitment to Mountain View Farm Road. See, Mr. Price added two conditions, go on, DEC, complete onsite wetland delineation, conduct consultation about wildlife. Mr. Segley added a sentence about the pipeline, a monetary plan before they make any changes. Mr. Cooley here, saying maintenance of the buffer, and that was what Mr. Burton said, condition, commitment to ensure the substation's screening in addition to the existing landscape and buffers, plus maintained over time. And that's all I've got.
Did you mention the maintenance of the stormwater?
The perpetual maintenance of the stormwater facility was the number two one until decommissioning.
And you had the DEC recommendation there?
I did have that, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's a total of nine additional conditions of approval in addition to what was already drafted and suggested by the applicant.
And how many were in the draft?
That I don't know. I'd have to look that up. There are several.
So here's where I'm at on this, and we've talked about this with several other types of projects, not just solar. When we have to go and start adding this many conditions, it tells me it's not a fit. If we have to put that many conditions on something, that it's not at the point that it should be for approval. And that's where I'm at on it.
I guess I would, my comment would be, the conditions that the applicant put in his package, I've got to believe that eighty to ninety percent of those were just a reiteration of what was in the ordinance. They weren't new conditions. So they would have applied whether or not he had them as a condition. So I think those are kind of all in one big lump. I think that the reason we have these discussions is to, is to make sure that we understand exactly what we're buying into or not buying into, so I think by coming up with nine additional conditions, I think that's a reasonable number, and I think that's kind of why we're here, is to make sure that nothing does slip by that shouldn't slip by, in my perspective.
I think some of them...
Let me, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think some of the items that have been added are things that would be taken into account during the site plan phase. The NWI maps and the wetland studies and that component are required by state and federal law. The maintenance of the stormwater would be handled with a maintenance agreement. The seismic, pre-seismic studies associated with the blasting is a requirement by the state code. So there's certain things in there that would be required anyway. I think we're just reiterating a lot of things that we want to make sure of get carried forth when the site plan comes forward. That's my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Stone, now?
Well, we have jumped from last Friday's draft, which I think is also a reiteration of what already exists in our county's solar ordinance, to adding nine more things in a kind of off-the-seat-of-our-pants. There was a motion that was read that seemed to be pre-done, so I'm not sure. I almost want to defer this until we can, we can't, we have a motion on the floor, but I feel like we need to see this back in writing to what we're voting on, and it's a little helter-skelter for me at the moment. That's all I have to say.
Well, I mean, can we take the time right now to write out those additional nine comments and be very specific?
We can. I mean, I think they're pretty specific enough, and Morgan read them off with my addition. I mean, I think we captured the true intent of the motion that was made on the floor.
Okay. I guess, I mean, I'm not opposed to having us reread those, if you'd like.
I don't think we need to reread what she just said. I think that's fine. I like to look at it in writing, because I think that this is very, very important to our next application, setting a precedence, et cetera, and it is a major impact in that Route Three corridor, so, and it is not industrial-zone land, and I pretty much was in favor of having industrial-zone land for solar. So, I understand, that's all I got to say.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, let me, let me just say a couple of things. So I had, I had some issues with this being in substantial accord with the comp plan, so I voted that it was not. However, I'm, I'm prepared to vote yes on the conditional use permit, and this is how come. I think it works there. I think it's well-screened. I think it's land, it's already been heavily impacted by the timber industry, and I can't see solar panels there being any worse than the, than the timbering that took place. I've not been a fan of solar while I've been on the planning commission, and I was not a fan of the Greenwood site plan, but it got approved by the board. And so, right now, we've got a solar policy that says we will allow up to 240 megawatts of solar energy production in the county. Greenwood is a hundred, this is twenty-six, that gets us halfway, just over halfway to the point where we can say no more solar. So, I think this works, and I think three to four more projects, possibly of this scope, carefully located in the county where they have a minimal impact on the most county residents, and we can shut the door on solar. So I also see this as a means to an end, a way to get us to the point where we can tell solar applicants, we're done.
Okay, and I guess, let me kind of wrap up my perspective on this, and that is, we're not here to make this decision. We're here to make a recommendation. And I think we've, we went, we've gone through this application, we've asked a lot of good questions, we've come up with a lot of additional conditions, and we've got a lot of good information, I think, that we will pass on to the board of supervisors. So, I think we've kind of done our job here tonight, and I think right now, we just go ahead and need to make this vote on whether or not we want to approve the conditional use permit. Okay? So, we have a motion, we have modifications to that motion, which we understand, and we have a second. So at this point, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand and say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Sam, you got anything else for us?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, move to adjourn.
Yeah, I was just going to say, thank you all for everybody who came out here tonight and gave your opinion. We hear everything that's said, and we take it into account. So with that, yes, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.